All right, looks like we have everybody here. Ian is gonna go ahead and lead the tour. So it's 10:30 and we're gonna call this part of the meeting back in session again. And we'll be on film here. So Ian, you'll let us know where we're gonna start?
All right.
And what we'll be doing.
Yeah. So we'll just kinda start out here, kinda give you a brief overview of what's going on with this phase of the project. Basically, what we're doing is getting the exterior of the building buttoned up, getting all of the exterior renovations with the masonry, a new roof, getting all that taken care of in this phase so that the interior of the building can dry out. Then on the inside, we're demoing out all of the nonhistoric materials. So all of the walls that have been added over the years, taking it back, kind of a reset, back to the original 1916 layout of the interior. So if we can all just kind of stay together in a group as we're going through inside, that way nobody gets lost. There shouldn't be any safety concerns inside. They're done with most of the demo, so we can go ahead and maybe meet inside this large room, right inside the door there. So... All right, so in here, you can start to see kinda the changes that have been happening, getting it back opened up, back to that original 1916 layout. So you can start to see some of the potential for getting offices back into here. This was originally the commission meeting room, as the building was originally built. We are going to be leaving the elevator shaft for now that was added in the late 80s, so that way we can preserve that vertical circulation for now. Any questions about anything you see?
On the original plans, this was the original commission room when the building was originally built.
Yeah.
And this was all open, so just kind of a note on that.
Yeah, the way that the building was originally laid out, it had these large rooms in this bay of the building, had these large rooms on the north and south sides. And then a lot of the individual offices were then on the west side at the front of the building. If we wanna move around on into the lobby and then over into the old clerk's office on the other side. So in here, this is the original lobby on the first floor for the building, and this is where we've got a lot of the historic material of the structure still remaining. We've got the terrazzo floors and the marble wainscote, and then all the original wood doors and frames. So this is a space in our... With the historic tax credits, this is a space that we'll need to try to preserve as much as possible. This is what we would call a Class A space, that is what the National Park Service would be looking for as far as following the Secretary of the Interior's standards for historic preservation. Any space that was a high-end public space in a historic structure is what you would want to be looking at, focusing on preserving. So whenever it comes to the more private office spaces in the back areas of the building, we have more flexibility in how we go about designing the renovations there. But this space, we would wanna try to keep it as historically accurate as possible.
Including the caster and radiator?
Those could stay or go away. We like to do on our projects, have those go back in kind of a non-functioning decorative role. They can take up more space in offices, so we don't tend to do it there, but out here in lobby areas, they can make a nice accent.
I'm real glad.
Can move around the corner here. So in here, this space, this space in here was historically the city clerk's office. So you can see, like I said, these two spaces on the north and south sides of this central core were both large, open office spaces originally. And here, we've got the historic vault door over here in the corner still, that leads into the historic clerk's vault. And this space, in our new program layout, we've laid this out to be potentially the finance and records office. That way they have access to the vault for their secured storage. And then over on the south side, that space we started out in, that would potentially be the court clerk's office. Because we're gonna go back into the old fire apparatus space here in a moment, and that would be serving as the future commission room and the courtroom. So that way, all the functions that have a relation to the court stay all together here on the first level.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I know we've got some plaster that puts interiors.
Uh-huh.
But the buildings I've seen downtown, you see that all over. It looks like it's not that bad here.
Yeah. Where we're typically seeing it so far is just behind the radiators due to that heat over time, driving moisture through the wall and causing the plaster failure. So we see that most common.
All the plaster looks pretty good.
Yeah, mostly it's in very good shape. We will do, as part of the second phase, we'll go through and do a plaster assessment on the roof and try to pinpoint areas that could be an issue.
Plaster assessment. Have I drilled a hole in the floor?
Huh?
Have you drilled a hole in the floor?
Um, no, not yet. Yeah. So in here, this is the original two fire apparatus bays that were part of the original 1916 building. And then this space behind me was the 1950's era addition for an additional fire bay. This space provides us with our largest open spaces in the building, so this is good potential to be the future commission room and courtroom space. Kind of a multi-function, large public meeting room area. You can see some of the historic details in here. We've got the two holes for the original fire poles. Upstairs, I'm not sure if they've taken it out yet, but we actually found one of the brackets, I think in that corner for the pole. It had been covered up by the acoustic ceiling that was put in lower. So one of those things, some of the interesting historic details you find whenever you start tearing into these historic buildings. Any questions in here? All right. Well, we can start, we can head upstairs to the second floor. Yeah, no, that's why I wanted to... So now we're here on the second floor, and on the north side of the building. And this was originally the large, open office area for the police department. This door here to the left actually led into their coatroom, where they stored all of their uniforms and things historically. And then the chief of police office was right here in the corner, connected to the city attorney's office. The main hallway up here is actually a little bit narrower than the one on the first floor, so that public space takes up a little less space on this floor. So we actually have more area that we have to work with for offices on this floor. Again, you can see there's still a lot of historic material in place with the historic doors and door frames. The plaster overall is in relatively good condition, even the ceilings, and then some of the historic crown mold trim around the top of the walls at the ceiling.
When I started, that was...
So they'd have this area along the north wall here and the offices in the corner. And we could potentially create a new corridor here to go from the stair into the main corridor. So we can head on around the corner. So now we're in here, second floor, in the main second floor corridor at the front of the building. And here we've got a large skylight that originally was, would have brought light into what was originally the main stair, grand stair from the first floor that came up in the space that the elevator's in now. As part of this phase, we're gonna be putting a new skylight on this opening. They'll be more historically appropriate and mimic what had been there historically.
Glass or something else?
It'll be glass. Yeah, it'd be a peach roof skylight. That's what the historic drawings showed was on this one. If you want to, you can kinda take a look through some of these offices here at the front, just to get a feel for what each of these individual offices was like. So this room historically was the commercial club room. So it's a good example of how the public buildings in the past were built as... The commercial club was what would have been the Chamber of Commerce back then. So, you know, public buildings were built to accommodate all the city functions, kind of in one central location. So this space in here, this space in here was historically the commercial club room. So that would have been what was the Chamber of Commerce back at the turn of the century. So it's a good example of how public buildings back then, they always tried to accommodate all of the overall city functions, you know, into the spaces that they planned for. So in here, on this south half of the building, and then around the corner through some of those offices at the front, this would be the administration offices potentially in the future. So they'd have a large, open office space here, and then a few individual offices along the front around the corner. We want to, then we can take a look up at the third floor, and then we'll head down into the basement after that. Oh, okay. Yeah, I adjusted earlier. I'd actually like to say a few things about the firefighter dormitory over in here first before we head. So this area, all along here on the east side of the building, above the historic apparatus space, this would have been the firefighter's dormitory originally. So this is where the firefighters slept, right above where the fire trucks were stored. So you can see up here, the holes that go down into the apparatus space where the poles would have been. And I didn't see if the bracket was still there or not that I mentioned earlier, but yeah, this was... This would be kind of some miscellaneous spaces, service spaces for all the offices on the rest of the floor. And we also have the historic lockers for the firefighters. That would be kind of a miscellaneous storage space, because we'd wanna try to save all that historic cabinetry in there.
Good thing those fire trucks had extended pollution control and equipment on them.
Yeah.
People up here sleeping in the fire trucks are down there warming up.
So we can make our way through the dormitory, and then around the corner, there's a stair that goes up to the old jail on the third floor. So up here on the third floor was historically the jail. On the north side, you have... South side? South side, you have the individual cells. And then here on the north side, there were two large rooms for, I believe it was the women's room on this side, and then a vagrants room on the other side. Up here, you can also see we've got the roof access via roof hatch. And then this is the top end of the elevator shaft area from the core of the building. So the elevator doesn't come to this floor, but there is an amount of mechanical equipment above the run of the elevator that has to be accommodated, so...
Was the shower for...
Yeah, this would have been for the prisoners.
They don't tune elevator up here.
And this floor, we're not necessarily planning on utilizing for anything, but maybe some low-end storage and mechanical spaces. With only the one stairway up here, it does present some code issues without adding a second stair down somewhere. And then, you know, we're potentially damaging historic spaces on the floors below. So it would be a challenge to utilize this space.
Is there a possibility of making the elevator come to this floor?
Possibly, but that'd involve a new elevator.
A possibility, what?
It'd be a possibility to put a new elevator in that could get to this floor, but we still have the code issue of only the one stair for egress, so... So if anybody doesn't have any questions up here, we can head down and take a look at the basement. Be careful down there, they are still doing some demo work, but they're gonna get out of our way so we can kinda take a look through.
Is that a port? Is that a gas line?
No, cold.
Oh. It's brass, isn't it?
Yeah.
So...
Mixometer.
So that's how you operated the shower?
Yeah.
Cool. I thought that was a little old. Okay, sorry.
Yep, basement.
Can figure out where that smell was coming from?
What was in the smell?
The pipes are broken from a year ago, we didn't know it, so it's just going in.
So down here in the basement, you can see they're still working on a little bit of the final demo cleanup. The basement was probably one of the most subdivided spaces over the years, with a lot of intervening, nonhistoric walls. This corner of the basement was one large room that was the Grand Army of the Republic room, so that was the Veterans Organization for the Civil War. So they had a meeting space here, and then over on the other side was the farmers' meeting room, so...
And ladies' room.
Yeah. Is probably the worst condition in the building, just due to moisture penetration of the walls over time. So part of what we're doing in this phase of the project is taking all of the loose plaster off of the walls, taking all the nonhistoric drywall partitions out. That way, we can start to let the basement kind of dry out to deal with those mold issues that we'd had down here in the past. It'll also help us, having all the loose plaster off, will also help us identify any areas that we have any water penetration through the foundation walls occurring still. So in here, this was the farmers' meeting room historically, and I'm not sure if y'all heard me, but the other corner over there, that was originally the Grand Army of the Republic meeting room. So that was the Veterans Organization from the Civil War. We'd have to take a look at that and see if that could be moved to a new location. Yeah, I'm not sure where the gas was originally. Yeah, sewer's below the floor, so... We have the city's IT department on that side, and then this side would be the home to the housing authority. So, and then we would keep the old boiler room as a mechanical space for all the future mechanical needs of the renovated project. And then there would be a few more support spaces for the offices, like employee break room and other miscellaneous storage spaces downstairs.
Guys' waiting floors.
Yeah, the Grand Army of the Republic. And then that would be the IT department, city IT. So they'd have servers and server room and things over there, too. Yeah, yeah.
Has all the asbestos been painted in the mechanical boiler room?
Yes, as far as I know. I'm not sure there is anything in there that came back from the testing of being asbestos.
Some of the elbow joints are gone, or some still have them.
Okay. Only follow-up on PSI.
On asbestos and the ones that were gone.
Yeah. That'd be my guess. They may have innovated at some point in the past. I think the only pipes they found in asbestos insulation are the ones through the basement part of the wall. So if anybody has any more questions, I think we could go ahead and wrap up the tour and start the next part of the meeting.
Reconvene at the veterans' room and continue on with the rest of the city commission meeting. That's the motion I made. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. So everybody back to the veterans' room, everybody that's interested.
All right. Thank you, Kelly, for providing lunch for everybody in attendance today.
I had help, April.
Help, April. Thank you to April. So nobody went hungry today. So we're at that point where we're ready to get started with Ian and Andrew Pitts and the presentation that they're gonna make today. So we're back in session, and let's move forward.
Thank you, Mayor. So what I'd like to do, based upon our conversations, it's about a month ago, was the questions that came up is really, we've arrived at a cost that everybody is trying to understand how we've gotten to that point. And the biggest thing that really goes into it is the spaces, the program of the building that ultimately makes up how big it is, which then ultimately results in how much it costs. So what I'd like to do, kind of based upon our discussion last time, was walk through the three different program areas, so the city departments, the police department, and the fire department, and then walk through in detail each of those program elements, let you ask questions, talk about it. I can kind of show you how big those spaces mean relative. We have some furniture in space to kind of give you a relative idea of that, and then we can have that discussion, and then see if there's some significant changes along the way that ultimately reduce the overall program, which then also can reduce the overall cost. Are there any questions or comments of the tour kind of before we go into that?
How much have you found once demolition was accomplished that is gonna need to be addressed to correct conditions?
Yeah, that's something I'm still needing to take a look at now that they're fully done with the demolition. But as I said when we were over there as part of the phase two, we'll come back down and do a full condition assessment to figure out how much historic material we have and what condition it's all in as far as plaster repair and things go, so that we can build sort of estimated quantities for plaster repair for all the floors. So that'll be the biggest issue.
In the fire department on the second floor, there's some steel plates with bolts coming through the wall. Did you notice that they've got the paneling behind it, and some are loose and conditions there?
Yeah.
And then briefly, we talked about the windows. You're gonna meet Friday to look at some issues with those?
Yeah, on Friday at our monthly progress meeting, we're gonna be meeting with the window subcontractor to take a look at the window details, and then I'll be getting some updated window details put out to them, so... Based on the variety of conditions that there are, that they've found, now that they've demoed out, one of each type of window, so...
Possibly additional cost, do you think?
I'm hoping not. I think we'll hopefully be able to come to a new detail that can be applied to all of them that would keep the cost level with what they had bid, so...
Thank you. So we're gonna start with the city departments and just walk through each of them. So I have up on the screen and just kind of walk you through what each of the columns are. So obviously, we have the name of the space, the quantity of those spaces, what the unit square footage would be. So in this case, 200 square feet, and that would be usable. So what you would, that we measure, if you took this room, it's the area footprint inside of the walls that you actually can use. And so had those spaces be more than one, then that would total up, and there would be a subtotal for that category, and then we add those along the way. As we've walked through each of these spaces, we've asked questions with staff on how do you work, how many people do you like to meet within your space, that ultimately derives how large a space should be. So if we look at the city manager's office, we've programmed a 200-square-foot office space, so there would be an office area, just to kind of give you an idea of how that lays out. So if you think of the city manager's space, 200 square foot, there would be a desk space, some side chairs, and then a small table within there, so the city manager could meet with staff or individuals within that person's office. So we have a city manager's office, we have an assistant city manager, we have a GIS manager with a flex office. This would be an office for two part-time or two workstations within that space. There's been discussions of when the auditors come in, we need a landing zone for them within it that they can be able to work. So this is the potential for that office. We have a Director of Public Safety and Code Enforcement. As you see, the city managers and the code enforcement offices are 180 square feet, so a little bit smaller than the city manager, still the availability to be able to meet within that. And then we get into a regular office at 120 square feet, just to kind of show you what that could potentially be, would be basically an office space within there with two side chairs in front of a desk. Building Inspector's Office. Flex Office, so this would be for two different workstations. This is a space we took out, and that's why we basically labeled the GIS office as a flex office. Reception workstation, a large conference room that would seat 12 people, so 400 square feet, a small conference room that would seat 150 people.
150 square feet.
150, yes, thank you.
Words are hard.
150 square feet. I can draw it, I can say it. A small coffee area, a copy workroom, so this is the copy printer, all the casework that goes with where the storage of that is, a room that would be for the maps and the plotter and all the plans. So one of Kelly's responsibilities is maintaining all that from the zoning and from the planning side, so 200 square feet for that. A single-staff unisex restroom, small secure storage, so this would be for HR, staff records, things you want to break off and secure differently, and then 100 square feet for just general storage within that. So all that adds up to 2,006 square feet. We then apply what we call a grossing factor, so that takes into account, we need to have the hallway in front of these offices needs to be captured somewhere within the program. The wall space between the two offices has to be captured in the program. So if you begin to add up, if you put a box around all these offices, that becomes what our gross square footage is, which is the 2407. So we have a grossing factor, in this case, of 401 square feet, or roughly 20 percent. That varies on departments, depending on how much space is captured in open offices, how much we think we can gain some efficiencies of how we lay things out moving forward. Stop me with questions anytime along the way. So if we keep going down, we have the Finance and Records City Clerk Office, so we have a Deputy Director's Office of 180 square feet, Deputy City Clerk's Office, 120, Accounts Receivable Office at 120, Treasurer and City Clerk workstation, so this would be a workstation out within an open office space, so that would be roughly an eight-by-10 space. Laserfish, so this is where you'll be able to view your historic documents, so it's a small workstation that is 40 square feet. There's a public counter, so the public comes up to one side, staff's on the other side, so we've counted that within the 48 square feet, and there would be two public workstations for the public to come up to. These would be full-time staff workstations, so again, about a six-by-eight or so space for staff, and then there would be another flex space, so if those two are occupied, public has another space to come up and be able to be dealt with by other staff. Then on the public side, you have 150 square feet, so stepping off of the main lobby space, so again, if we kind of look at that in kind of a diagram form, so if you came in off the main lobby space to a secure lobby, there then would be three transaction counters for public to be able to deal with staff. And there would be a small waiting area for the public in that area.
Andy, I'm sorry, when you say "secure lobby," how secure, what does that mean exactly?
So one of the discussions that we've had with staff was, how do we, how do we create that interaction between the public and staff in a secure and safe environment, and what does that begin to look like? And so the discussions have been of creating a physical barrier between the public and staff, whether that is a sliding glass window, whether that's a half-glass, whether that's a full glass that's ballistic. We haven't got to that level of detail, but that's what we're trying to indicate when we say that, is it means to us, is there is a physical barrier between that, but we want to create that barrier in such a way that still has a customer-service friendly approach.
Yeah.
And that's, it's a hard balance.
I would say so.
Between what goes on.
Yeah.
But we've been pretty successful in other projects.
All right, thank you.
So then again, on their side, we have a coffee area, a copy work area. This will also be where all of the city mail comes, and then from there, it is distributed or put within mailboxes, so that's why this area is a little bit larger. Secure areas for all of their secure records, general storage area, then again, this would be the central supply for all the city, so when you have a paper delivery, when you have toilet paper, paper towel, all that stuff coming in, this is kind of depository, then it's from there distributed out to the other departments. As you can see, the grossing factor on this is 18 percent, as opposed to before it was the 30 percent, because some of the program spaces we have above are open workstations, and so we're counting for a lot of that circulation within other program areas. So that's why we vary that as we look at that program space. So moving to Public Works Engineering Utilities, we have a Public Works Director Office. You can see, we've tried to set a hierarchy of all the offices at a similar level or similar size. Utility Director's Office. Flat File Storage, so this is all of your archival storage for Public Works and Engineering. We're going to share the conference room with an adjacent space, whether that's Administration or the clerk, depending on where this lands in the building. Again, a small little coffee area, a work area for them, and a smaller copy work area. Depending on how this lays out and ultimately in the plan, some of these spaces may be able to be removed. If this is adjacent to another program space, we may be able to share copiers' workroom space, so we don't have to duplicate that. But we've captured that within the program right now. Again, we have a 20 percent grossing factor on this case, so adds up to a total gross square footage of just over 1,000 square feet. For the Housing Authority, we have an office for the director. We have a public waiting area for small seating area there, a receptions workstation, two offices, and within those, that's where they meet with the public, and so that's why they are at that larger square footage to allow for up to three additional people to be meeting within that office space. A records area, again, coffee, storage, copy work. Again, these could be shared, depending on where it lands within the building. And it's 1,228 gross square feet. As we look at the court clerk, the discussions we had last time was, we want to locate this adjacent to finance, and so they can begin to share resources and also kind of the back of house areas, and have that public face be at a single point within the building, as opposed to right now, you've got clerks on the one level, court clerks on another level, that we wouldn't have to move people throughout the building as much. So we have a court clerk's office. That would have a public window with a pay counter, their copy work area, their files for the courts, a small landing area for the judge, a small landing area for your city prosecutor, their laserfish station, and then a coffee area. Again, these could be shared spaces within the building. Then we come to the commission room and the municipal court. So we're looking at a 1,500-square-foot room. What we're laying out is the dais, so the main area where everybody sits would be able to allow 10 people. If I remember correctly, that is your planning commission? Is that correct, or is that...
The planning commission has nine members.
Nine.
One staff.
Okay, plus one staff. So we would begin to lay that out, so you could seat all of your committees and different groups at that, and then a long half-court, and then also be the commission room. Off of that, we have a small attorney-client room. There's a math error somewhere there, but let's just go with 80. Square feet, eight-by-10 rooms, so your clients and interns can move outside of that. Small area for tables and chair storage, so again, if you want to be able to move things around, get able to get, bring tables in to have a different type of a function area, training space, you have that adjacent to it, and then an area for your AV. So that adds up to about 1,936 square feet.
So this would also serve as our training room, correct?
It serves as another space within the city that you can use as much as multipurpose as possible. The only thing that really becomes fixed in that space then is really the dais where the commission or your planning commission would sit, but it becomes hard. We've tried to do that movable, that gets really difficult, but the balance of the space could be used for additional training space. Information technology, so we would have a workroom and office with two workstations within there, there's server room that would serve the entire city departments, and then a storage area, so that's a lot of times where you keep your miscellaneous monitors, computer parts and pieces that's secure from the rest of the area. So that's 578 square feet. So then there's just other spaces that go on top of this. These, again, may vary depending on how we've laid the building out. As you see, we've pulled the training room out, so that, again, that would be using the commission chambers, or if we had an emergency operations center within the fire department, you could duplicate that space. We would locate in different areas of the building, small shared meeting and conference spaces, so a small meeting room that's 150 square feet, a medium one that's 300. Somewhere within the building, we'd have a break room for staff, and then we've accommodated staff restrooms and public restrooms that, again, may vary on the quantity depending on the layout. The trend has been to go to more unisex individual restrooms as opposed to a large male or female, so that way you can be able to disperse those a little bit easier throughout the building, and then we're not having to designate a specific sex to that restroom. Janitor's closets, data rooms, electrical rooms, everything that has to kind of go into the building also, assuming we'd have one per floor on those areas, so that all adds up. So if you took all those different areas, you add all that up, so this is the gross square footage of all the departments, and then on top of that, we have the circulation that we need to get to from the different departments within the building. So if you think about the historic City Hall, that number can grow just because of the inefficiency sometimes with the layout of that space, but we've added another 20 percent of a building grossing factor, so that takes in the exterior walls, takes in some of the internal circulation, mechanical space, and so forth, and so that adds up to 13,870. Any questions on that?
Do you have the number of staff per area?
I can probably tell you if I go through each one. I mean, so one, two, three, four, five, within administration, and Kelly, keep my math honest. Finance, one, two, three, four, five, six, six. And clerks, make sure that's... Yep, okay, just making sure, yep. Public Works has got two. Housing Authority has three. Court clerk is one FTE, but then you have a part-time judge, part-time prosecutor. No full-time staff within the commission. We have two workstations for IT. Again, I believe these are contracts, so they're part-time employees also.
And if you have the building inspector and admin, then that would be six, not five? Because you have the reception area.
One, two, three. You're right, I didn't count the receptionist, sorry. Yes, thank you.
That was on which one?
Administration.
Administration. Six, total. One, two, three, four, five, yes, six for reception. And I believe that is all currently budgeted FTEs.
Yes.
So there's no FTE growth built into that program the way we've laid it out. So I want to do the same thing on the police department also, and kind of walk through those different areas. So within the police administration, we have chief of police, we have one captain office, we have admin support, a conference room, which is primarily the conference room for the entire department, secure storage, again, this is primarily HR and their secure files, and a coffee work copy area within that space. Investigations, we have two detective offices, secure storage for investigations, and two interview rooms, one hard, one soft. When we say that, basically, the soft typically has a smaller couch, it's the ability to bring families, kids into a space that's a little less intimidating for an interview. Evidence, and this is obviously the area that significantly grows over time, so we have what we call bag and tag, so this is where the officers bring the evidence in. They lay it out, they then bag it up into either bags or boxes, then it goes into an evidence storage unit before it is processed by the evidence technician. So that's that area for the officers to be able to bring things in. Well then, from everything from then is on a secure side from the evidence technician, so there's a lab and processing area, so this is where they can do drug testing, fingerprint testing, be able to do blood drying of certain items if they need to within this specific area. Then we have short-term and long-term evidence storage. Short-term, a lot of times, is we know we need to hold on to this, but we're not sure what it's going to be, or we also need a space within it where we need a storage area where we're trying to get rid of evidence, and let's move it from the long term and have it in this area. So it's a 500-square-foot space that accommodates that. And then our long-term storage is just that. It is the stuff that we have to maintain, some for the life, some for 50-plus year of cases, depending on what cases are going on, so...
Andy, back up on the administration. We do have a code enforcement officer, and I didn't see a space for that. And that's something that's been kind of redone in the last year, so you may not have been aware of that.
I had David as public.
That's the director, but we have an actual code enforcement officer.
Oh, you know the one on top of that?
Okay. You might make a note of that.
David doesn't want to wear any more hats.
Twelve is his limit.
Okay. So back to evidence. So large evidence saliport, so this is a space where if they're bringing, most of the time, everything can fit in smaller boxes into an evidence unit, but this is if there's a large piece of evidence they need to bring in securely, it's just basically a small secure room to bring that in. And then what more times or not we find, and this is a lot of times bicycles, is just found property, is they've gone along, they see something, they're not sure what it's connected to, but they need to hold on to it, and so it's an area we try to store away from what we know is secure evidence in that space. So you add all that up, and it's 4,200 gross square feet. That is roughly, I believe, the square footage plus a little bit of extra of what you're storing now in the lower level of the hospital, I think is what we basically looked at, is okay, how much space are we taking up, once you moved all that evidence there? And then, once we move to, excuse me, high-density storage units, we can be able to shrink that footprint, and so within a similar footprint, store more stuff. And so that's what we begin to look at as we get into that evidence storage. Then we go to the patrol side, so we have two sergeants' offices, so it's basically two offices with two workstations. So there'd be two different offices, so four different sergeants, that they would share those spaces for their different shifts. The school resource office, animal control, there's a roll-call room for patrol, so this is when they're beginning their shift. They come into a space, and then the sergeant briefs them on the day, the previous days or nights activities. So that's roughly six to eight people, which accommodates your current shift load. There's patrol riding, so when an officer comes in off the street, we'd have three workstations and their officer mailbox for all their stuff, where they can be able to complete their reports within that area. An area for patrol equipment, so this is extra flashlights, extra speed guns, tasers, if you have them, radios, and then just all the stuff that they also have to have occasionally onboard. We have a small weapons cleaning area, so this is where an officer can go in and be able to clean their service weapon. Armory storage, so this is where a lot of times SWAT, CRT, whichever you're calling it, and plus any of your ammunition or other weapons that you may have... and plus any of your ammunition or other weapons that you may have are stored within a secure space. Quartermasters, so this is extra uniforms, belts, equipment, and so forth. Then we have a space that we're calling child in need of care. So this is a space where they can bring a youth who is not in custody, but needs to be removed from a situation, and so it is a place where they can be able to process that, be able to meet, bring support staff into it. So that's that large area of two hundred square feet. But we also want to have a space that's comfortable for the youth and try to lower that stress during that environment, during that encounter. So we have a small bedroom space within there, a restroom, and then also storage, because there's extra clothing, toys, so forth, that we try to have within those areas. So that's patrol, that adds up to two thousand and fifty-seven gross square feet. So as we look at dispatch, I just noted that we would want to harden this space per the building code requirements. So for dispatch stations for the city, we would have two full-time dispatch stations at eight by ten. We'd have one backup station. We have a city dispatch supervisor in an office, and then they have their records workstation. So this is where they're processing a lot of the warrants and the records that they then need to hand over to the patrol officers. We've removed the county dispatch from the program. We then have a work area, copy-print area. We have a small break area and staff lockers for the dispatch staff, so they can take a break away from the dispatch station. We have a restroom area, and then we have record storage within this. It is planned that this would be the front door to the police station. And so as you come in, this will be the ones that you interact with on a twenty-four-seven basis, ordering eight to five. And so this is also where you'd be able to get records from any sort of thing that you need from the police department. And then we have the backup house server and server workroom, so all of the dispatch equipment needs to go in there. This will be where the secure police server is, also the radio connections back to the dispatch. All that is located adjacent to that dispatch, and so we want all that space to be within that hardened environment. And then a workroom also for city staff and IT. Now, it is possible, depending on how things lay out, you could pull the IT department that is located in the city program and move that to here if you wanted to co-locate that as much as you can, and then just backfeed in a smaller sense the server to the city hall. So there's options and flexibility, which could potentially save a little bit of square foot as you move forward. So we have a small booking and intake area for the police department. So this would be an area where they could bring somebody who's an arrestee in. They'd be able to securely hold them on a cuff bench, ID, fingerprint, and then blood alcohol content testing. There would be a booking restroom. So a soliport, so this is where an officer can pull their patrol vehicle into. There'd be two garage doors that are closed, and so they can securely transport that arrestee then into that booking area. Then there's also a storage area, typically we just fence off a portion of that soliport for patrol bicycles, it could be large evidence, it could be general storage. So if you have power washers, generators, so forth, you can have that within that space also. And then we have a room for your K-9. A small little kennel area. So then on top of that, again, come the support spaces. So a break room for staff, male lockers and restroom. We are programming twenty lockers for the males, sixteen lockers for females. And then again, depending on the layout, we've programmed two staff restrooms throughout the building. A lot of the restroom lockers, the restrooms within the lockers can double up for staff, and then public restrooms also. And then this general storage for the building. So again, if we sum all that up, we come to sixteen thousand four hundred and two gross square feet. Oh, and I skipped one, sorry, that's coming down. KBI is also located within your building. They have requested four workstations in a specific office, and then also an interview space. So now let's look at the fire department.
So...
Yes, sir.
Can you give us a staff for those different areas?
Well, I can tell you who has an office within there, I mean, the majority of police staff is on the road. So, but within...
Yeah, just the office.
Yeah, within the actual space, we have, admin has one, two, three. Just make sure, confirm that, so chief, captain, admin, support. Two detectives, so two there. Four sergeants, but there's only two there on a shift. So I don't know how you want to count that. There's two desks for four people. Or two offices for four people. School resource officer, but again, they're back and forth depending on the time of year, and animal control. And then dispatch has three. And that is really who is housed at the police station.
KBI, four.
KBI is four, if they're all, yeah, again, if they're there. And that's not under your...
On other, it looked like you had thirty-six lockers, but that's just general to...
So that would incorporate both staff that's at the building plus patrol staff. And then potentially, if there's growth in that, but...
What is that, what did that number total, that you just, you just announced, Paul?
Oh, you thought I was keeping track.
Seventeen?
Seventeen, okay. He's got it, seventeen. I was trying to put all the numbers down, I missed a couple, more than a couple.
Maybe if at the fire department, I'll actually do that along the way.
Okay.
So fire administration. We have a fire chief's office, we have a captain office, we have a lead medic office. And then we have an EMS report room that have three workstations within that space. Copy work area, and then record storage. So three FTE offices plus EMS support. Within their support spaces, we have a training room and emergency operations center. It's seven hundred and fifty square feet. A storage room that would be associated with that. Tables and chair storage for that, so the EOC storage would be more your phones, your books, all your maps, everything that you need to pull out whenever you do have an emergency and have to activate that. Tables and chairs would be just for that. A kitchenette associated with that. Restrooms, two unisex restrooms. An exercise area. Restroom shower, so again, this would be basically a standalone unisex restroom shower adjacent to the workout area. So you could have that set up where other city staff have access to that, depending on the layout. And then the vestibule day lockers, so for other staff to come in to use that. They have a landing zone for their bag or equipment while they're there. So that's twenty-two hundred square feet. Then within the living quarters, we have a living day room, three hundred and thirty square feet. We have a dining hall, and we've, enough seating for ten people for a shift. We have a kitchen, and within that space, we have obviously the typical kitchen equipment, but then we would allocate square footage for three larger refrigerators. So each of the shift has their own specific refrigerator. And then again, on pantry storage for each of the shift, there would be a pantry room for each shift. There would be sleeping quarters for ten. And let's just kind of show you what the trend is within fire. And so you see basically unisex restrooms that would also have showers within that space. They would have locker areas for their personal stuff, and then they would have sleeping areas that would have wardrobes within there. So you could be able to share these amongst the different shifts. But it would be individual sleeping bays for each of those.
Those regular beds or bunk beds?
Typically, the trend has been just a single bed within that space. So there's ten sleeping quarters, there's four individual restroom showers, and then one accessible one. So there's...
Yeah. So right now, we only have a seven-man shift? So we're providing three extra just...
Well, we have like paramedic students.
Okay.
You know, to come in and help her out on a shift. Or we had a, we had a EOC situation. We have a place for some of those people to go to and get some rest during the operation.
Okay.
And we also have a janitor storage room, and then we also have a washer and dryer. And so many times, individuals don't want to go home with the day's soot and dirt on them, and so they'll be able to bring, remove those contaminants at the station and not have to be able to introduce those to their house. Then the largest space obviously is the apparatus bay. So we've programmed a ten thousand square foot apparatus bay. This is two thousand square foot larger than your temporary one, so it would be another bays wide. We have a shift office, so this is basically an alarm office adjacent to that for the shift commander as they're relieving. We have a workshop laundry decon for the firefighter clothing. Turnout gear, so this is where their firefighter equipment is kept in locker spaces adjacent to the bay as they deploy. Mechanical janitor space. This is the air compressor space, so we'd have a small room to be able to refill their air, and have a compressor in that space. We have a hose tower to be able to dry, so that would be a two-story element, so roughly a ten by ten room, two stories tall, which is why we basically have the quantity of two. And then we have to have a separate medical storage from the rest of it, so we can be able to have any of the drugs or any of the medical supplies separate from the rest of the fire supplies. And then so that adds up, and again, you see on some of these, because they're large spaces that have space in it, the grossing factor in this case is actually pretty small. So again, this basically, if you sum up the fire department, we have twenty-two thousand square feet, twenty-two thousand six seventy-one. So that's where we then kind of move, and it totals up to what we've seen the program numbers that I've shared with you before. What questions can I answer? Did you get the FTEs on that one? Sorry.
Jerry, on the police, on the shifts, how many people are there per shift? Uh, yes, chief, sorry.
Sorry.
Okay.
We have three patrol officers on each patrol shift. During the day, you have about ten people total.
Okay. And then at, in the late night shift?
On each night shift, you'll have three to four, usually three on a night shift, just depends on when the K-9 unit's out.
When you're talking about three to four, you're talking about patrol units, right? Okay. But what additional staff is there besides the patrol officers and the K-9 unit?
We have dispatch twenty-four-seven as well.
Okay.
So you'll have typically two dispatchers on. And during the day, you have an additional supervisor, a suit, a records clerk. And then during the day, you'll also have an administrative assistant.
Okay.
And a community police officer.
So school resource officer is now community. I had to wait till you put something in your mouth. I was watching, I was watching your hand.
Can we get that on film? Thank you.
So on this, there is a need for a fifth bay on the apparatus bay.
Yeah, based on the discussions, and I'll look back here. But for the quantity of apparatus you have, and especially some of the larger apparatus you have, there's the desire to have the fifth bay associated with that.
Would you do a nice casualty incident trailer, intercommunications trailer, also to have those? Right now, it's cramped in there, as far as logistics. I mean, we can make do without them today.
With the additional, most of that equipment there will be all related to fire service that's in the apparatus bay there. So most of that, most of that material and equipment will have to stay in that building. You don't see any of that, any of that equipment being moved to another area. I mean, it's specific for that particular area, okay?
You mean like storage?
Yeah, I was talking about like for storage, because you have your certain equipment that's adjacent to your fire apparatus equipment. But I was just wondering, when you're looking at storage in other areas, would that free up some area in the apparatus bay by moving, being that you have other areas to put storage at? That you, that would free up some space that you're currently using now?
Not really. I mean, like where a gear rack is, it's in between doors. I mean, it's not taking up any equipment, vehicle, or trailer space.
Okay.
Any other stuff, you know, that would need to be in the bay, you know, we have tool branch and tools and, you know, oils and fuels, stuff like that.
Right.
Sean, do those trailers, the mass casualty and communication trailers, would they have to be in that bay? Or if there was another place that we had storage to put those, would that be feasible or not?
I don't know where else we could put them.
Want to just say, and say there was a place, would that be feasible, or do they have to be in the bay?
For not quick access.
So as long as we had quick access to it? Okay.
And they would be, those, that equipment would need to be climate-controlled, is that what you're saying? Okay.
Because those are not like a first response, you're going to go from immediate, it's assessment, and then select the, to set up the command station. Those are more like...
Large-scale incidents.
Large, yeah, large-scale incidents. Similar to like Niuteshe where they had the incident at aerosol. You'd be responding to set up a scene to control access and monitor conditions.
Right.
Okay. Not just responding on a structure fire.
No.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so that is...
So what, kind of, I guess an overview of how you got to the total square footage is looking at individual pieces. And to address those individual pieces, this is the total you come to.
Correct.
But actually, when you start putting the pieces together, and I think you mentioned it as you went through, there is a potential for sharing.
Correct.
Spaces that can reduce and get a higher efficiency rating or utilization of the space. So similar to multiple conference rooms. Or as you start combining, there can be some consolidation in record storage or... or supply storage, different areas like that. So, you know, you've
Correct.
kind of addressed in, in our total, the ideal. This is what we want. And now, there's still molding and shaping to actually coming within a footprint, if we're looking at utilization as, as we walk through the existing building. Kind of get a reality with everything gone and the space, particularly second floor and the basement, where the historic walls have been maintained, that you're losing a lot of space because you're maintaining a wall that was old. But it's not significant to contribute anything to the value of the space. Because you, you start taking out and eliminate a eight-foot hallway and put in a five-foot hallway, you can gain in that additional three feet, plus, you know, looking at, as you've addressed, some areas with open office planning and, and group that, you know, you do have a lot more space that the only thing set in masonry, the elevator, the stairway, and the load-bearing wall between the office portion and the fire department. But we can see that there is an opening, men cut to connect the two spaces. So, you do have that creep space from the office portion into the traditional fire station that can be, a wall can be breached, larger, more, more times to provide that access.
I think as you can see, you know, you see, the, the big areas in what Ian identified during our walkthrough are those two, you know, on the main floor of the historic city hall is that original entry lobby space. Is one of the critical elements that we need to maintain from historic components to be able to maximize the tax benefits, the tax credits. And then also, some of the spaces on the lower level and the upper level. I mean, we've, as you can see, we've opened up a significant portion of that floor plate to allow you flexibility to develop it what it needs to be. We don't get a great efficiency sometimes just because of we're trying to fit X amount of square feet, and oh, if it was just like this, it'd be a little bit different. But we, we have found that we can be able to easily accommodate the city departments within that city hall building. So, and still maintain some of those historic characteristics and features. The difficulty becomes, if you then apply other program areas, say specifically the police department on there, that square footage then becomes much greater than what's in that footprint, or the ability to add on becomes a lot more complicated.
Yeah. And, and some of the, well, the, the long-term storage and short-term, some of that's, like, I think you had addressed a couple months ago about found property, the problem you have with it accumulating. You're trying to do a quicker release on bicycles or some items. Instead of letting them accumulate and addressing it once a year, you're increasing the frequency of, of dispersing that so it can cut down your accumulative mess. And I think even when we talked about moving the stored material out of here, you know, the, the records disposal, long-term, that there's a process and sometimes staffing and the out-of-site, out-of-mind upstairs that it has accumulated a lot longer than, you know. It was kind of like a, you walk in and you find, here's what we need to do. And so there's some ways to improve our efficiency. And, you know, even what we talked about this morning with the dispatch and your, your staffing of how some conditions can really utilize you more efficiency and manpower, so.
It's just like your home. Sometimes you have to move to be able to purge some of your stuff.
What do you mean? Get rid of some stuff?
Otherwise, it does just accumulate.
Yeah, keep the Beatles album out, but.
During the tour, Ian said that we can't really use the third floor for anything where people need to be there because of the stairway access. Is there any view of using that for server room or mechanical systems or?
Definitely, yes. So, storage space, mechanical space, that is what we've anticipated that to be. I mean, the biggest issue within a public building is you don't have an accessible means of egress to that.
Right.
And so, we would advise you not to put occupy, spaces up there just to help protect yourself.
Right, but you can use it for storage.
Storage, mechanical space, server, yeah, all of that is open for possibilities.
So storerooms don't have to be ADA accessible?
I think there's opportunities for you to have that space to be a storeroom up there
Okay.
and be able to, be able to minimize those concerns.
Same with the, the single egress, the stairway, as long as it's
Right.
mechanical storage or server support. I want you to become occupied, and then you need to look at, and to try and put a second exit out of there. Going to consume too much space or it's
It would, it would, you'd spend a significant amount of your resources doing that for not a much sure whole lot of bang for your dollars.
Yeah, but like you said, Gary, with the support, mechanical, or server.
It'd be nice for that. See, I mean, it seemed to me.
Yes.
If you do use it for storage, if there was some way to put some kind of um, lighter system or something, to at least get boxes and stuff up there, because it is difficult.
We actually have the old hose tower, I saw that.
Yeah, so, you know. Just a thought.
Look at Dave, he can carry it. So the first few categories you showed us, other than fire, EMS, police, fit, I believe you said, fit nicely in our 1916 city hall?
That is correct. All those city departments fit within the 1916 city hall.
And that
And allow you some other space if you so desire.
Right, and give us a meeting room for the
Correct.
which we don't have now.
Correct.
Which we kind of, I mean, don't have one dedicated for that.
The problem with the meeting rooms there, when you start commission meeting room and that, is the column base. That you don't have a large open area, that the column isn't going to be in the way.
True.
That's kind of the advantage of, of this room, that the whole public. I remember when the commission meeting room was in the second floor on the south. If you were sitting there observing, you had to lean, you know, and, and dodge that obstruction. And even utilizing the apparatus base, you still got the columns in the way. So, you know, to really effectively use it as that space.
It's not perfect.
Yeah, no, and then if you're trying to, to record or broadcast, it increases the problem, but.
Well, these two gentlemen are brilliant. Surely they can make it invisible as part of the project.
They can with the money. Columns can be removed.
They can be. We, we've got some pretty creative ways to be able to, to try to help with those sightlines. Or I just sit behind a column when I go to a commission meeting, and that way I'm not called on, so it's
That works.
They're valuable.
Yes.
You know, even with the apparatus base, if you, you look at open office, and if you've got computer terminals, like a computer room on elevated floor, accessible floor system, you can change and reconfigure really, really easy. So it does allow some flexible adaptation of that space.
So, I heard you say the square footage fits pretty well in the 1916 building. Have we got layouts in mind?
So, what, what Ian has done is what you see on the screen is just from a programmatic standpoint, to do a test fit, to understand.
Gotcha.
Okay, so, in this case, like the darker green on the first floor is the financing clerks area. And so we know that the program areas we've identified fit within that piece of the building. The blue is court clerks, correct? Yes. Administration is on the upper level. IT is on the lower level, public works on the upper level. So we, we know that we can, without going in and figuring out every office space, we know we can, we can fit that program space within those areas of the building.
Great.
There may be other ways to, to, to be able to move those around.
Sure.
We went with the, the clerks and the court being on the first floor, since they're the kind of highly trafficked areas for the public. And then from there, moving up to the less public spaces with administration and public works.
So what next?
Now let's reduce square footage.
Well, we already got the building. I mean, the square footage is set in the 1916 building. Why would we?
The, the easy task is saying that the city departments fit in that building, and then ultimately, how much is it going to cost to renovate that to make that work? I mean, that's step one. And then the next step for you is to understand where do you public safety wants to land? And then what are those solutions from that side?
And that's where it comes to the dollar.
It all comes to the dollars.
You know, we're going to have to get it way below what we've looked at. And one of the things that, you know, I'm trying to go back quickly and look at, you know, is a major increase, the two thousand square feet for the apparatus bay? Where, where? I'm looking at some numbers, we're forty-nine thousand square feet. I'm, I'm really not organized on that today.
So, just pulling up on the screen what, what I have. So if you look at just the 1916 city hall, the demolition costs are, these are costs that you've already have accumulated with the project you're doing right now. So, then renovation costs, or we'd be coming back to infill those spaces. So again, we've, we've put some dollars per square foot, varying them a little bit, depending on what we think. Like in the basement, we saw there's more plaster work that needs to occur, and so we spent a little bit more dollars on that as opposed to the other floors. The attic being less square footage. Additional work that may, we've actually backed out the exterior improvements because you, you've done that already. And then upgrading any of the site work, and then also the utilities, and primarily a generator that serves that entire facility going forward. And so if you look at the twenty-one thousand six hundred square feet of that building, that's where we, you know, and an average of roughly a hundred and seventy-nine dollars per square foot, come up with that three point eight million dollars. Now, if you, you took the, if you took the public safety cost off of it, and then just look at the soft cost with just the city hall, I mean, you can kind of see, and, you know, we can dive in to make sure that these numbers don't need to come down also. But you kind of see ultimately, if you were just looking at a city hall project, what that potentially could be. There's some assumptions being made. We actually wouldn't probably need a site survey, you've already done the hazardous, we wouldn't need a geotech. Construction testing probably would be a little bit less than that. So there's, some of these numbers would definitely go down. And then depending on how much furniture you wanted to buy as part of the new project, that's what that allowance is for that. And then I always suggest keeping a contingency because things come up along the way, especially in an older historic building. So I'd be separating that, just that project out and saying where that is. You know, then from that, we put dollars on what we are seeing in, for construction of public safety. So this was combined fire and police in one public safety building. You know, you've basically got the apparatus base, so it's the ten thousand plus the support spaces. At, it's, you know, it's just a big metal box, so it's a hundred bucks a square foot. It's not that much dollars, it's just a big space. And then first floor and second floor of that space. And then I put a premium on the square footage for dispatch and for the EOC to meet the requirements for the ICC 500, which is the storm shelter requirements in the code. Site work, parking lot there, again, utility upgrades, generators associated with that. So that on average is about two hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, up just shy of forty thousand, and so that's where those numbers are. I mean, so that's the, that's the math that we've tried to take, is look at some of the individual program spaces. How big is that program space? Where have we seen those costs? I know those costs could be plus or minus ten percent, depending on where we are in the market or how we begin to deliver the project. And then ultimately, that's what it comes up to. We put a contingency on there, just because, I don't want to be your low bidder. I want to make sure that this is reasonable, and then from there, the soft cost could add it on top of that.
From the original study done in June 2017, we've increased square footage, six thousand square feet.
And that is?
And
Primarily, let's see, yeah, six thousand three hundred and ninety square feet
Yeah.
is what that delta is. Forty-four hundred of that was in fire, and that was primarily the two thousand square feet associated with the additional apparatus bay. Plus, we did not originally have programmed an emergency operations center into that space. And so that is the balance of the additional square footage there. The square footage in the police department was the additional for a little more for KBI. It was additional area for the child in need of care space, and then larger evidence. And then city hall actually went down. So that went down fifteen hundred square feet. So that's what nets out to that six thousand square foot difference between the two studies.
Does KBI lease the space from us, or is that a gift to them?
I don't think they leased the space. KBI doesn't lease the space, but they become a support really in a lot of your investigations.
They provide so much support, and because they don't really have, they, they office where they have an opportunity to office. So if we don't have that, then we're going to lose some support level from them, just because they don't have it here.
And that's, that's why they were anxious actually to add some workstations, because they'd like to have more people in this area.
Yeah.
And I think they, I think they brought two more agents to our area.
Yeah. Yeah, if you, anytime you can get something you don't have to pay for, of course I want more.
The balance is out as the support you're getting from them from the KBI in your investigations.
And we, we're very grateful to KBI for the quality and amount of service that they provide us at the cost of this.
So what'd you figure, two hundred and forty-nine dollars a square foot?
For which one, I'm sorry?
For the renovation.
Uh, for the new public safety building, it averages out to two hundred and forty-nine dollars a square foot.
A hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars that were given KBI.
At four hundred, four hundred square feet, that's what it was.
And the renovation cost for the 1916 city hall, you estimated, you said that was based at a hundred and seventy-nine dollars?
It averages out to a hundred and seventy-nine, yes.
Okay.
What are the potential historical tax credits after this? You didn't have to consider that as inclusion measures after tax credits.
Yeah, you probably haven't gone back and updated that yet, have you? Go back to.
Yeah, if they go in the old, the existing building, that's only ninety thousand.
There's roughly fifty-five hundred, or fifty-five hundred plus, six thousand square feet that's unused, or five thousand square feet unused in the 1916 city hall. Has he determined that is thirteen thousand?
Yeah, thirteen thousand eight hundred seventy.
Yeah. With a usable space of nine, that usable space. Oh, they're busy. Usable space of nineteen thousand six hundred square feet.
So, sorry, going back to the original study. The question was asked is what do we think the potential estimated tax credit reimbursement would be? We had previously estimated around 900,000. Now, again, that has to be determined on what we actually spend and where that money is spent, and then what a value we can get that. But, so, three quarters, three quarters to a million dollars potentially could be reimbursed as part of that project.
And just to, I've got so many notes here. The renovation of the 1916 City Hall, what does that project out now? I mean, the cost is different than the 2017 amounts that were provided to this committee.
So right now, the way we're looking at, if you want full project costs or you want construction costs, or?
Let's go full project. You can get both, both.
Well, let me... So, construction costs were 4 million, 49,325. I'll put that on the screen, sorry. Okay? Make that easier for you. And then what I did is I zeroed out, since obviously we have an existing building, we're not going to have a survey. We've already done the hazardous material, no geotech. So with roughly $711,000 in soft costs, so 4,764,464. 4.76 million.
Okay, and that is, I don't have the original 2017 documents that you provided. What was that cost in 2017?
Back in 2017 dollars? It looks like it was 5.6 million. Now, granted, you spent some of that on your existing studies that you've done.
And the exterior.
The exterior work. And so that's what we have zeroed out above.
That's basically securing the envelope, is what we're doing now. So that cost has been backed out of that.
Yeah, so that cost, and I can go back to, I mean, I think I roughly had, I was actually within a couple hundred bucks, I think, of where you spent and what we had budgeted.
Okay. So then this, this total then is, let me think here a minute. The ceiling of the envelope, was that projected to be somewhere around 1.1 or 1.2 million dollars? Would that be, would it be in the ballpark?
Yeah.
Trying to go by memory.
Yeah, one, between 1.1 and 1.2.
1.2 million dollars, okay. So that actually brings the total cost of this?
Yeah, so I'd budgeted 1.296, and I think that you're spending just around that with everything.
Okay.
And then the abatement and everything, so yes. Yeah, so that's, that's where that renovation was 5.6 plus soft costs. So knowing what's going in there now, we actually lowered some of those costs going forward because we have a better idea of what that scope is. So part of this has been a combination of you've spent some money on the exterior improvements, that 1.3. And then I actually had lowered some other costs just because I know if we're not tied, because originally we were tying the public safety building to that building, remember that dialogue? And so I had one single generator that was looking at all that, so I backed that out. So there's some other things that we've done within those costs now that we know better idea of what that scope is. So that's helped those costs too.
So we were, we were looking at a total project of 5,606,000.
Plus soft costs back then, which I don't think I had those broken out separately. So you're actually in a better, now if you add the, you're probably about the same as where you were if you add the two together, if you had the 1.2. Yeah, so you're still better off today than where you've been before.
Okay.
Because that was, that was a 5.6 million number before.
Okay, and it's come down to 5.3.
5.3.
Current total contract on the exterior project is 1,077,900. And that's with all those add alternates.
Okay.
I guess I, I'm still looking at where, where we keep going. And we, we start originally with discussion of renovating existing City Hall, everything fit in, in the building, fire, police, administration. Then we go to 46,000 square feet, and now we're at 52,000 square feet. And I think, why are we, why were we shown a plan that it would work? And we keep growing. And I think we're going to have to come to a, to a solution that we get the bare minimum that we're going to need and still function. We, you know, I don't know where, where we keep creeping in space.
Now, a project cost of this, it originally started out 16 million?
Back the previous, yes, all the way back then.
Just a little over 16,1 or 16,1 or 2, okay. And then now we've looked at it at 13-plus million dollars?
Correct.
Correct, I don't know. The problem is, is that both of those figures, they're not going to fly with the community. They're not going to fly with the taxpayers. They're just not, they're just not, they're not going to buy into it. And that's the reality of it. That's the harsh reality of it. They're not going to buy into it. So expectations are going to have to be adjusted. And we're going to have to come up with a workable solution that meets needs. But it also is something that's going to have to be a buy-in to the community and the taxpayers. But neither one of those dollar figures I've mentioned, their DOA, people I hear from, the people that talk to me, they want a better outcome, and they want a better solution on this. So we've got a work cut out for us. Part of it would be finding where we could, what you talked about earlier in the City Hall, about sharing designated spaces for like copiers, things like that. Maybe look at something like that to, to, to reduce some of the cost there. You know, we would have, just looking at my math here, which is not the greatest, but somewhere around 5,730 square feet that would be available in the 1916 City Hall, which would be unused space, according to what the figures you've shown here. So what to do with, where, if we increase and come up with additional square footage on there? That's just unused space, so what are we going to use it for? What can we use to accommodate? And everybody, everybody does communication through email, through this. You know, that, that's all changed. You know, where I worked at, we had, we had everybody in that facility, in one facility. And then they went and they got away from that. And they took, they, they took, of course, this is a little lot different because you're dealing with public safety here. So that's not really a fair comparison. But, but that changed depending on who was, who was in charge of the company. You know, you went from satellite to incorporate to Wichita or Topeka. And then you had some variation to where it kind of went back and forth. You know, where I was at, at the last, there were probably six or seven different supervisors for all the work groups in the building, but none of them were on site. They were in Topeka, Wichita, Shawnee, they were somewhere else. And you corresponded with them through this, through email. You know, that was just the reality of it. And so how we operate is a lot different than we did in 1950 or 1960. Technology changes that. So I think we need to, need to continue to look at that, how we can operate.
One thing, you know, I think we've really, what you've presented is what we need. We can look at the spaces, we can talk about combining space, we can talk about our needs. But until you actually start putting the space together, we're not going to know if it'll work or not. And, and paper is a lot cheaper than construction. And we're not going to know until we get a preliminary plan laid out. And we have to take a point and say, this is what we want to see fit in that building. It might not work. We might waste the plan, but we're wasting paper. And, you know, that's why I think we had a plan that showed everything in there. I know things have changed. But until we actually see a plan and say, administration and police go in that building, lay out a plan, and then, you know, we, could you put up the existing building? One of the, I think the last, one of the presentations you showed an addition going in the parking lot.
Correct.
But that little, the little wing that was the horse bay or whatever through, I mean, historic is only good if it's relevant. And that's not a relevant space. So why are we maintaining a space that's irrelevant? That, you know, if we, if we set our, our goal to look at, what it would take to make those two departments in there, make it work? Maybe raising that part of the, the building, that appendage, and doing a smaller addition would make the building work.
And one of the, one of the possibilities with that addition is actually to reconstruct the new addition simply within the foot, existing footprint of that, that area.
So, you know, I think we're not going to know what we can do until we actually go beyond colored areas to actually doing layouts. And the historic interior walls are the ones on the first floor. None of the others are worth maintaining. You start looking at some horizontal cracks in the clay tile, some of the door openings that are cut in there. The best thing is to raise them and look at the most efficient layout for that space. You know, until we actually get a layout, and maybe at the end, they'll say, no, it's not going to work. But at least we got something to know that it's not going to work. And then we can go to the next step from there because we're going to have to look at our costs. We're going to have to look at actually how shared space can work. That, you know, a janitor closet on each floor is nice, but housekeeping can take the mop up or the vacuum up from the basement to service all the floors too. So there's, there's ways to consolidate space that we're not going to know until you actually do the layout. And utilization of the, the, that back parking lot for a, for a Sally Port. You've got three bays that may be utilization of the Sally Port off of Myrtle Street is the best. But, you know, until you actually lay out, you know, you could have a, the entrance to another auxiliary main entrance to police or even administration if you put it in the apparatus bays off of Myrtle Street. Now, there's a lot of things that can happen until you start actually doing layouts of walls and space, and we're not going to know. But I don't think we're going to be able to make a decision what's going to be the best until we actually see a preliminary plan with the spaces laid out. I think all you'll be able to do is come back to, to give us numbers just like you've done. And you've given a very detailed presentation. But until you actually see how rooms layout in a given perimeter with given restrictions, we're not going to know. And 6,000 square feet's a lot of area to leave unassigned. So I think our, our next step, we need to, if we're going to go forward, we need to at least see conceptual designs for the potential of the building. And we're not locking in to a commitment, but we need to see what it can, can be done.
Is that covered under our current contract? Or would that be like an addition to the contract?
Yeah.
Oh, no, he's promised unlimited preliminaries until we're satisfied. That's all, what all architects do, right?
To infinity and beyond.
That's right.
No, I, I think a preliminary was included in your proposal, wasn't it?
A revaluation of the program was what, or the scope was, but not, not additional concept design.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure, I don't think we wrote that.
And that was in the fine print on the back of the third page?
Disappearing ink.
Yeah, yeah. If you hold it over a candle, the, the writing does appear.
So do you want them to bring back an amendment to the contract to include those conceptual drawings?
I think that's...
Would that be the direction?
I think that's where we're going to have to go.
And then we would be looking for priorities from the commission of, you know, is it administration and police? Is the city commission chambers need, or does it have to be within that space? Or look at it both ways? So if we can have a little bit of direction of, see if you can get this to work and what does that mean? That'll help us then be able to provide you back with those concepts. Because I mean, I don't want us to keep kind of making it up and then we're not there yet.
I feel that we can't keep duplicating. We've got a double-use space. This works for the commission meeting room. This works for planning and zoning. So, you know, we can have one audio visual. We don't have the columns, the limitations there. So for, for the money that we would be putting in to have this room there, we could put, take that money and put it somewhere else.
We'll still need a training area in the building.
Still need a courtroom. But not as big.
Yeah, it could modify.
What are you going to train?
Train our employees. We have meetings.
I've seen them all very perfectly skilled.
Oh, do you? Well, we appreciate that compliment.
You know, and it depends on what you, you know, for a large training, you've still got this facility.
Yes.
But if it's a smaller group, and that could double as a small conference room, you know, facility, but keep it as small as, we don't want to have this room, and a courtroom, and a training room all separate that we get multiple spaces doing the same thing, which is nothing the majority of the time.
Well, the, whatever the courtroom size is, should be able to accommodate what we need for the training room and some multi-space. We'll just have to determine the space for the...
Crime is going down.
It is?
So then we need a smaller court. So, then we need a smaller court.
We can do a virtual one.
Virtual criminals, yeah.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to see what this conceptual layout of what this actually is gonna look like. And like I said, there's, you know, if we already have an existing facility that we're using now, then why, why build an existing facility in another building? Let's use where we can, where we have a space available, that the city is already paying utilities and upkeep on now. And then try to consolidate shared areas where we can, and then see what you come up with there, but I'd like to see what this would, what this would look like, a visualization of what this would look like.
So, you want that visualization of administration and police in the same building, is that what you're telling him?
Yeah. Yeah.
Why don't, why don't you write up an understanding of what our discussion is and submit it to Kelly? Kelly can get it to us, and then we can review it. Before you do a proposal, just kinda summarize what-
Yeah.
In your understanding that is, and-
Let me do that.
Would you wanting to do also one on fire EMS, because that's gotta be a piece of this as well? In a separate area?
We have, yeah. An addition to the apparatus bay, living quarters, administrative.
Just by, correct me if I'm wrong, which I probably will be, um, just looking at the square footage, apparatus bay and support, if I, if I looked at this right, I come up with 22,671 square feet with 12,000, okay, 22,671, and then with 12, okay, the apparatus bay would be, is it 10,000 square foot, or is it 12?
So, your current one is eight?
Okay, so it'd be, that would be a 10, two more thousand, no, excuse me, 2,000 square foot on that, so it'd be 10,000. So, you're looking at living space of over 12,000 square feet for a fire and EMS facility?
No, you're looking at, so-
The total was 22,671?
Um, so, if, if I backed out 8,000 square feet, because you have an existing 8,000 square foot building, and, and we wanted to enlarge that apparatus bay to be another bay width, plus the support spaces, and administration, support and living quarters, so that would add up to 10,000 square feet plus some grossing factor. So, that grossing factor actually probably could go down just because of the way we're laying that out. So, I would say it's probably in the 12, the 12 range, addition to that. But again, there's a lot of assumptions in that.
Sure, sure. That would be what you would be looking at for, for living quarters-
In addition to your existing apparatus bay, correct.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at, okay?
Now, we do have the old EMS building for some storage.
Yeah, yep, we own that, and it's sitting vacant. Okay, yeah, I think that, I think that's the direction we would like for you to-
Okay.
-look into and go that way.
We could do that. I'll provide Kelly kind of a summary of what we're looking at, just to make sure we're all on the same page, and then we can get, we can get it for that.
Right. That would, there would help us, help us get the total cost of the project down.
Ideally, that's the goal.
Ideally, that's the goal, because, you know, like I said, we can, we can do all the planning and number crunching that we want, but the bottom line is, if, if the community doesn't, doesn't feel like we've done our due diligence, then, and they don't support it, then, then we're back to the drawing board.
Yeah.
So, okay, well, I appreciate the information.
You're welcome.
Appreciate the tour. I, I think you have a better understanding of what we're, what we're looking for.
Well, you have quite an asset there in that building, so, you know, you wanna make sure it's put to good use.
Yeah.
It's, you can see, it's a pretty stout building.
Oh, it is, it is. Um, you have any other questions for us?
I don't think so. I know there'll be things that come up along the way, but I'll work with Kelly, and we can develop that, and then, you know, the big thing is, is we put this all together, we're gonna probably have a list of assumptions that we've made, and we'll make sure that match with your priorities going forward, so we'll just probably have some more dialogue back and forth on those things.
Okay. All right, sounds great.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Ian, Andrew? Uh, with that, I think we've covered everything that we wanted to today, so I'm gonna make a motion that we adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for being in attendance today.